And thank you for being patient with us. Could we please all stand to the touch of allegiance?
United States of America, and we are a family of Christian faiths, one nation, under God, in the name of our Lord and our Father.
Roll call.
Mr. Abescauto.
Here.
Mr. Rizzuti.
Here.
Mr. Alcieri. Mr. Ananopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Here.
Mr. Vudop.
Present.
Mr. Vindola.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Kee.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the record, the South Bergenite, the Observer, township clerk, and posted in the lobby of the town hall and board office, setting the forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings to board. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes from February 25th, 2019. May I have second?
Sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abescauto.
For.
Mr. Rizzuti.
For.
Ms. Alcieri.
For.
Mr. Ananopoulos.
For.
Mr. Ferrandino.
For.
Mr. Vudop.
For.
Mr. Vindola.
For.
Mr. Donovan.
For.
Ms. Kee.
For.
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to welcome everybody here tonight. We have a lot of things to do tonight, a lot of good things, a lot of positive things going on in the district. You will hear them tonight with a few of our administrators that are here to go over them with you, a lot of them regarding our students and our staff. So it's very encouraging, it's very positive, as well as our normal business that we have for board meetings. So we'll try to do a lot of that student stuff first, if maybe you have anything more exciting than a board meeting to do tonight, but you're obviously welcome instead as welcome to a public meeting, so we're very happy to have you here. Just on an educational note, the New Jersey School Performance Reports are out. That's available, they're on the website in a link, as well as if you just go to New Jersey Department of Education, you could pull up the New Jersey School Performance Reports. So what they do is about this time of year, you'll get a report on last year's statistics, so it's 17, 18. We're obviously looking through all those reports. The format changed last year for the first time, and it changed even a little bit more this year, but it's similar to last year in comparison to what it's been in the past. We are looking at those reports because they are very detailed and they are important, and we want to make sure they're accurate, because there has been some concern that maybe there hasn't, there's been some inaccuracies in those reports. Not tomorrow, but maybe from the state of New Jersey, and so we're just making sure that the numbers that they have match with our numbers, we want to make sure we get credit for all the positive things that are doing here in the district. So again, thank you for being here tonight, or obviously we will answer any questions that we have today on our agenda. I will turn it over to our state monitor at this point, Mr. Tom Egan, and from there we have some presentations from some of our administrators in the district for our students.
Thank you. Just quickly, public report, I think it's happened up here with some bad news, it's not bad goodness. I contacted the district ordinance to ask them for objection, this happens when our finances are moving into the year. I'm feeling that we may be going into deficit again. My fears were totally unfounded. The voter is preparing a final report which I will receive by the end of this week and turn over then to the board and the financials for that. What basically states is that not only will we be in the black, we will also be having to generate surplus going into the following year. My experience has been, moving to the school district that's in deficit, the year the deficit appears is devastating to the district because it only results in cuts in staff, supplies. It's just been the most difficult year, and it's the second year, which is the year we're in right now, because the staff, the home students, are nervous that if we run out of money, there will be more cuts and more program cuts. So having the objection and everything as well, it is excellent documentation that the district is going in the right direction. And to the board, I'd like to point out, one of the things that I saw and observed was the fact that in central office, the entire central office team were working together, like a great team, that goes to the superintendent, the BA, down from the support staff, everybody was pulled together, and it worked, and it is working. And the problem is associated with it. Just leading into it, I've lost the additional flow super generator, and we begin to look at the possibility to evaluate whether or not we can put the district to transfer their health benefits process to the state health benefit group. Right now, we're self-insured, and one of the problems we're being, or fears we're being self-insured is, from year to year, the level of cost can fluctuate, which prevents us from having a stabilized system. So if it's financially feasible, that's why we'll be in here when I get more information, of course, as the chairman of the board and the board. But also, it gives us, as a separate issue, to inform the, to the, to the public, as you know, the town is in the process of building, the new middle school is turned over to the district this September 2020. For us, in the school district, to accept it and run it efficiently, we have to get ready now, and the superintendent, a team of administrators with tasks with starting transition to that, this could be non-smooth. And they too have done a magnificent job, because last Thursday, we met with them, and they provided us with timelines for the benchmarks that we have to make and reach to succeed, so that we can open up the school on time and in this year. One of those objects was, of course, was to hire the new middle school principal by January of 2020, so that that principal could be in place to help with the transition. That process will start over the summer to research for the new principal. We will keep the public totally informed, and we think that the meeting on the agenda will see a resolution to appoint someone who can hire, and it's also becoming a research for the principal, and also to work closely with the administrative team that is working on the transition. Once again, this is, at a time, will be totally informed at every board meeting, as the progress will, we just have a little progress, and that is.
I'd like to turn the meeting over right now to our high school principal, Mr. Vudop.
Hi, everyone, good evening, welcome. It's so good to see all your faces here in front of our rows. We have so many great things happening, and I love this part of the month, because I get to take the microphone and tell everybody all of the great things that are happening at the high school. But first and foremost, I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of our high school family, and you will be seeing this character at our football games this fall, and that will be our new mascot, our new golden bear, that was recently, Eric Gavconan. Our new costume that was recently purchased, so it's brand new. We want to thank Paul Passamano and Steve Passamano for so generously donating the costume to our new school. And I hope to be able to go to our man's section, our golden bear, I'm not gonna tell you who's in there, does anybody know?
Everybody does.
Yeah, my, but we want to thank her so much for coming and showing and modeling the new golden bear, and we're looking forward to getting a jersey and naming the bear and doing all different kinds of stuff, fun stuff around the new mascot, so thanks so much. And thank you Steve and Paul. Thanks, Daisy. Okay, second, second on my agenda is Ms. James Stevens, who is gonna come up and talk to a little bit about one of our initiatives in the high school this year.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me, thank you for introducing me, Ms. Vudop. We've embarked on this initiative with the Municipal Alliance of Linder's to become a stigma-free district, but for this year, we're gonna be stigma-free at the high school. So many, many times you hear this term stigma-free, and you say, well, what the heck is that? What does that even mean? So our goal this year is to create awareness about that, and we're gonna do that in a couple of different ways. One is, you see these signs, have anybody seen these signs up around the high school yet? All around the perimeter, okay, cool. So stigma-free is being mentally healthy and creating, creating awareness around mental health. So we're gonna be generating that this school year in a couple of different ways. One is, we launched a website, LinderStigmaFree.org, anybody can go and visit, and they can get resources for mental health, for mindfulness, for being aware, just overall keeping yourself healthy and check. Another thing we're doing, of course, is signage, and we also have buttons that we're going to be giving out to the public and to students to, again, just be mindful that mental health is important, and that there are resources available to the students and to the community. Another culminating event that we're working on getting together is a stigma-free walk in May, where we're gonna have all the students in the high school participate, of course, with parent permission, and we're going to stop at comprehensive behavioral healthcare, and hopefully the mayor's office as well for some photo ops. And again, it's about creating awareness for the kids and for the community that there shouldn't be a stigma around mental health. If you are struggling with depression or with anxiety, there are resources available for you, certainly at the high school and also at the county level. So we're gonna be really pushing for this, so you're gonna see this year, we are all about just creating awareness. What is stigma-free, what does that mean, and making students and making the public aware of that, that there is help that they need made. And that's it for now, thank you so much.
Okay, next up, I know all you students love coming to the board meetings, but we all know why you're here, so why don't you come on up, all of our recipients of our seal of bilingeracy kids, want everybody to be looking at you as long as they can, so come up, line up this way, line up along that way. Also, too, I'd like to have our advisor, our advisor, our teacher, the core of this group, Ms. Maria, Ms. Maria Rojas up here, who's done an excellent job, so she's been at the high school in the world language department, it only took me 15 years to convince her to come here, but we finally got her, and she's doing great things. Also, I want to have up here, Ms. Agbeyosi, who I know is in the audience somewhere, or was, whereas she's a big part of the world language department, yes, and also Mr. Marte, come on up, please, yes. These were, Ms. Agbeyosi is an elementary teacher for world language, who really gives these kids the foundation, and Mr. Marte unfortunately left us not too long ago to take an administrative position, but he was also a staple in our world language department. And I would be humbled if I didn't introduce Mrs. Romero, who is with us, she's a world language coordinator from the state of New Jersey. And she's a state leader.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the world language coordinator for the state of New Jersey Department of Education, and I bring you greetings from the commissioner of education, Dr. Lamont Repalet, who would have loved to have been here to congratulate these students, these wonderful students, this staff, for their hard work in achieving the seal of bilingeracy. What a great thing, right? These students have been certified that they not only speak the English language well by passing a PRC or whatever other exam they took, but they are also bilingual, they speak a second language fluently, or a third, in some cases, a fourth. That's a great achievement, a great achievement for them, a great achievement for this school district. So I'm here on behalf of Dr. Repalet to say congratulations. Congratulations, students, talent, teaching, principle. Thank you so much, thank you for your hard work, congratulations.
I couldn't be prouder of these students if they were my own kids, and I always tell them, when you're in here, I'm your mom, so you gotta pay attention, not only in class, but to me, I hope I'm giving you all good advice. But I'm so, so very proud of being an employee of the Linder's School District, because we must be doing something right, because look how diverse our school community has become, and everyone wants to flock here, and everyone wants to do great things along with us. So we have a very diverse population of students, this year we have 37 disciples in total, greater than last year's and the year before, and we keep rolling. We have diverse languages represented today, we have Albanian, we have Turkish, we have Arabic, we have Gujarati, we have Turkish, we have, what else, Portuguese, Spanish, of course, did I miss any of you? Hope none, right? Okay, I think we got everybody. Polish, sorry, Polish, okay, okay. Practiced Latinxia, so I better get Polish in. So we got these kids, and we're going to recognize you today, I'm so, so proud of every one of you, and thank you all, I know my name comes around a lot, Mr. Bizik, for those checks, and look, it paid off, right? It's not bothering you, it's gonna keep rolling. So please allow me to continue to promote languages in our school district, thank you all. Of course, Mia Kunas, felicidades, where are you at? Agresca Aguilar, felicidades. Tenemos Mohamed Alayoubi. Karimah? No. I'm Karimah. Gabriela Certales. Suli Arias. Ryan Arroyo. Christopher Arroyo. Gabriela Vergono. She took her mask, yeah, so she could be here. We're trying to work, we're trying to work. We don't wanna get fired. Emma Camano. Rafa Camano. Nicole, Nicole, remember, I made the Spanish, but it's not okay. Koynaski. Katarlas, right? Kisha Cruz. Alexandra Espin. Andrew Staphanou. Manat Tetera. Somaya Hassan. Aaron Harabi. Austin Reagou. Janita Kafaj. Patrick Calabria. Tahisha Laszlo. Suzanne Ratzewitz. Brenda Tega. Galanier Ortiz. Arna Blue. Tim Oster. So Eric Pachardo managed to get advanced in all four components. Valeria Galberia. Maria Lina Sanz. Mateus Sales. Aragorn Fatiel. Ardenio Sordo. Diego Sapo, another student who scored perfect. Alta Tezer. Nazli Tiago. Jan Torres. Melissa Delis. Maria Riana. Elena Vinanova. Thank you again for your support.
I just want to say one thing, this goes to show, out of all the students that sat and took the exam, that for some, you know, we just, one out of this bunch, just goes to show what dedication these students have to their school, and to their studies, and to what they're doing, that they all showed up here to accept this on behalf of the school and of the board of ed, so just want to let you guys know, really proud of you, and keep up the good work. Maybe an exit. Okay, so I'm gonna continue while these guys are going to do their homework, right? There's a couple of things I just want to fill you in about that is going up high school. One of the things that we'd love to see is our students continuing to do great things after high school. So there were two alumni achievements that came to my attention over the course of the month. One is, we had Dan Deistino, who's a class of 2001, I gave pictures to the board, but he was featured in New Jersey Home Magazine for building one of the crime houses in Washington Township. He's an architect, and he was featured, it was an 18-page spread in New Jersey's Home Magazine, it was really impressive, they did a story about him and his accomplishments in the world of architecture, this just really makes you see an alumni imprint, so I wanted to take note of that. Also, we have a musician, Dan Razif, who went on to achieve great things in Asbury Park, New Jersey, he played at the Stone Pony, him and his band, out of 500 fans that tried out for this one particular musical competition, they came in first place. So our band, the name in first, which, the name of the band is The Green Knuckle Material, and they won the chance to headline at the Stone Pony this summer, they're opening for a national act, they won recording time in the studio and cash prizes. So that's really nice to see our musicians on stage doing their thing. Next, back into school, just a couple things worth mentioning, student activities, we had our project graduation for our senior class, the project graduation fashion show, which was a huge success, it was March 12th at the Fiesta, they were featured in NewJersey, northjersey.com, if you scroll through there, you'll see pictures of all the kids doing their thing on the runway. Another group worth mentioning is the Italian, the Italian students, they had, they competed in the Italian competition among Clarest State University on the 14th. This is a group of kids, and it's severely unprogrammed, get together and work on the language in the morning before school, then they take it to Monmouth University and compete in various events in that language. They didn't place this year, but our Italian program is still young and growing, we unfortunately don't have it in the elementary school, so they're not getting the foundation that some of our Spanish kids are getting, we're looking to change that once the middle school comes about. Another huge group, a big part of this school, is our FBI students, they were just down in Atlantic City at Harrah's Hotel, they had their state competition, we sent down 65 students, competed at Harrah's last night, so kudos to all the kids who were well behaved and did a great job, also to the advisors and to the chaperones that went down, trying to manage 65 kids in Atlantic City hotel isn't easy, but they were all on their best behavior, and they finished fantastic. We have one, two, three, four, five, six students who have won a place to compete in the national competition in San Antonio, Texas, this summer. Sean Leonard in journalism, Hallie Spagu, Conrad Squarrie in computer gaming, Elena Villanueva, Gabe Arsatales, and Emma Camano, who were three of the students that you saw up here, they are going to be competing in San Antonio this summer, so keep the competition. We had two students who actually ran for state office, it was a tough competition, it was their first time running, unfortunately didn't win, but they had to give speeches to over 700 people in the audience, they had to have their own campaign booths and raise their own money, so we're really proud of those girls, Alyssa Barrera and Sarah Fungat, so we're proud of them for putting up. On our music friend, I just want to mention Maria Gashion, recently auditioned for a Region One jazz band, won the audition, she placed in the Region One Jazz Band Ensemble, and she is a freshman, which is a huge accomplishment, only one of four trumpet players in North Jersey to have a seat in this jazz ensemble, so that's big kudos to our music program. Our proud students were busy as well, they performed a wonderful recital at Carmel Church. They performed a wonderful recital at Carmel Church on the 19th. Thanks to Miss Alina Wise, who does so much work with the Corral Group. It was a beautiful night. I know some people would send it, I couldn't, but they said it was a wonderful night. And the music, the choir and the Corral just does such a beautiful job. So thanks to Miss Wise for that. The band in the color guard, the Run and Go Again. They played at the Devils Game at the Prudential Center on March 5th. So the, our whole band was there, color guard was there. And after their performance, they had an opportunity to see the game. So that's always nice for them. They do that every year. So that's a good way for them to showcase their talents. On the athletic front, it's spring, where everybody's looking forward to spring ball. And we had our preseason. We had our baseball team come back last week from Fort Pierce in Florida. They had their spring training. And we just had our softball team. As we speak, we're walking in, our softball coach was getting in from Cocoa Beach, Florida. It was the first time our softball team has been down to Florida for spring training and that went fantastic. Coach Ringen and Coach Busco did a great job with them down there. And they all made it back safe and sound, so they're on their way home right now. Our sophomore wrestler, Dylan Weaver. Just want to mention, this was a huge accomplishment. Finished third place at the NJSIA Wrestling State Finals in Atlantic City. Anyone who knows wrestling knows that that's a major accomplishment for anyone to actually wrestle down there, let alone placing. So as a sophomore, we're really proud of Dylan and we look to bigger, greater things next year. Just want to mention, we have another Coach of the Year. Our coaches are fantastic. Coach Dennis Jelsik was named Coach of the Year of the Big North Conference for Ice Hockey. He was real helped by that, but he's really good. And I would maybe miss if I didn't mention some of the, not only the great things happening in the classroom, on the fields, in music, but also to, the high school is all about volunteerism. So not only are we showing our community efforts outside, but also inside. And there's a lot of things that we do in the school as far as volunteerism goes that nobody knows about. And that's why I like to take the microphone and tell everybody, because there's so much going on as far as volunteerism. The FBLA raised money for Sarah's Fight for Hope, March of Dimes for Pediatric Cancer. Our business department raised money for the Brian Fischado Scholarship, who is a teacher who had passed away last year. We offer a scholarship in his name. Our SRO team, Pasmano, headed up the No Shave, No Member, proceeds from that go to cancer charity. The Italian club did a Dad and Daddy, where proceeds went to Healing Space Sexual Violence Resource Center. FBLA did Bowling for Babies, which is a march of dimes to improve health of infants and babies. We have an animal welfare club. And they raised money for the Humane Society of Berber County and also collected animal supplies for the animals. The Italian club did a toy drive for Audrey Hepburn's children's house and Souls for Souls, where they collected shoes and they worked in conjunction with the Women's Club of Livers. The World Language Honor Society did a sock drive for the homeless. One of the teachers spearheaded a dress down day for the World Down Syndrome Day. Another teacher spearheaded a dress down for multiple sclerosis. One of our teachers is actually walking in the Liver Walk, Ms. Ruiz. And Mr. Curici is doing a, is running a New York City Marathon, the charity and the proceeds will go to the North Shore and the League. So that's just been some of the things that we've been saying. Also too, worth mentioning was, there were some other things that some faculty and staff did. This month, we held a parent testing night, where we offered the opportunity for parents to come in and learn about all the state testing, all the mandates that were required to uphold in the high school. That was really well received. It was a really good opportunity for people, for parents to come and ask about the ACTs, SATs, PSATs, NJSLAs, what that all means and why we have to administer them. Also too, we were down at Career Day. There was a couple of us, Ms. Stevens, myself, and Ms. Bernardo, who was down, we were down at Monmouth State University, representing the district for the Educators Career Day, looking for the best and brightest of the new teachers out there. So it's been, it's been a busy month. That's kind of in a snapshot of what's happening at the high school. I love updating you guys and letting you know about all the great things that our teachers and our students are doing. So, see you next month.
Thank you, Laura. We're now going to hear from the people who signed up for comments on the agenda. And the first one up, Tracy Corman.
I noticed that some policies were going under second readings and I just wanted to know what was changing on her two particular items. 0167, public participation in board meetings and 142.1, nepotism.
With the policy, what we did was we put a limit, I think, on the amount of time if necessary. So it's up to our discretion, but we can institute a certain amount of time for the comment. And then the other one was...
The nepotism policy? So using a service called Strass, it's made by New Jersey School District use. So the nepotism policy is actually the standard policy that is kind of the boilerplate. So I can actually send a copy.
Well, I mean, it's nothing, I mean, is it more?
It's just based on some legal updates, you know, and sometimes, for example, sometimes, you know, there's been some years where cousin was a conflict and it wasn't, so things like that.
It's clearer now?
It's a little bit more clear.
Okay. And actually, may I ask you one more on there? Policy 1069.02, board member use of social networks? Is that, again, another blanked policy? Did we add anything? Are we taking anything away from anybody?
I don't think it's mandated, so it's something we just won't have to replace.
For the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Milos Topik?
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I want to thank the high school principal for these wonderful updates. Just make a suggestion, maybe nice invite principals of other schools to the same. So when it comes to the approval of the pre-K resolution, right? Could you give us a bit of color as to what does it mean with the schedule? Because there's a lot of rumors around this town and there's not a lot of secrets, right? Things come out. So whether it's half day, is it full day, what are the rates? And what's the thought process behind it? Are there any changes to the actual sites? Is the lighthouse remaining in operations? Is it's up to date? It's clean? It's safe? And I have more questions depending on answers you provide.
Those are very good questions, thank you.
Those are the contacts.
Yeah, so I'll start off by saying the idea is to go to a half-day model with offering the same amount, if not more, openings or spots for students. So that is the initial, that was, I guess, your first question. Another part was in terms of the facilities. I think we had an idea of how we'd want to work our facilities without losing any staff members or anything like that. So I wouldn't be able to answer that in finality, but at this point, I would say there is a possibility that, that, you were specifically talking about the lighthouse, whether it might be open or it might not be open, so it has to be officially determined.
I'm just, at what point do you expect that to be finalized? Because we're already kind of three months behind. If we just compare the decision timeline from last year. And if we compare ourselves to some...
Eating grounds, right?
Hundred percent. Obviously, there were some extenuating circumstances here with the budget. So obviously, I think we want to make sure, I think we've had success with the program and that there's no question that students that left that program have been prepared to enter our kindergarten throughout the district. But I will, I will say that I think in the registration letter we sent out, that we said we could send something out by the, oh, break, the spring break. We'd like to do it hopefully early next week, if possible. So I think we just used that as an initial gauge when we were still going through a lot of different scenarios. So I mean, at that point, I think we'd have a lot more things that we can answer in terms of tuition, in terms of, now, the tuition, we did approve a rate tonight. We're looking at, and we're looking at the half-day tuition to increase to $310 a month. For full transparency, the preschool is not fully funded by tuition, not by performance. So it's a lot that the board has to put into that. I think it's been important to them, so it's something that we want to continue to do to the best of our capabilities and continue to get that.
Okay. And just, so I understand that the per-month increase is about 40% more than it is currently, right?
Probably, okay. Yep, that sounds good.
And the decision to stick or to reduce to only half-day is based and driven by what, finances?
That's part of it. I think there's some other, some other concerns that we had too. I think we're also looking to expand some of the things that we're doing in those classes. So I wouldn't just say it's based on finances, but there is, that does come into play, finances and space. I mean, space becomes an issue too. When you open up, I mean, one of the questions you asked was about the lighthouse. When you open up the entire facility for one classroom, it becomes, it becomes difficult to not prioritize that just like any other goal, regardless of how many students, because that should be taken just as important as any place else. So that becomes, you know, those positions, those places have to have staff members there. To keep, you said the place is already clean and there's people that clean it, there's people that work there. They do a great job and there's no question that we want to continue to use those people, whether it's there or someplace else. So I guess that's probably the answer. But go ahead, you might have a question.
Actually, I just want to, I just want to give you one kind of final comment. I don't want to obvias this.
No, it's okay.
These formative years are critical and to all of you who are educators, right? Are formative to the future of our children. If we don't invest properly, if we're cutting down programs, reducing time spent to invest in kids who are three, four, five, we're going to pay for it at 12, 14, 15. So I don't want us to operate with the model, I hope we're not going to be operating with the model of playing catch-up. We'll catch-up in a year or three or five. Because at some point, if you look at what you can do when it comes to formative years of a child up until age seven and then some core correction up until 10, past 10, for a lot of kids, is too late.
I understand. And one of the things I do want to mention is, and I think the most important thing we're talking about here, because there's a lot of ancillary things with facilities. And tuition, obviously, is important and we want to keep that affordable. And some of the things we did was look at neighboring towns. And I can assure you that neighboring towns, whether it's interdemographic or not interdemographic, if you look at enrollment throughout Burn County, throughout neighboring counties that are closed, whether it be Essex, we offer a lot more than anybody else in that, so percentage-wise. So if we're going to talk percentages based on how many students we have, what type of enrollment we have, we do offer a lot. And we're not trying to eliminate that idea. We do understand the importance of it. And I have two children that have already went through preschool in another town and one that's going to. Through the town, there's a much smaller openings that are available. There's probably less than 30 from the whole district. So I think we're actually going to increase the available spots by going to the half-day model, which would help. I know it's, becomes an inconvenience for some people, but I also know that in some of the places where we do end up making it a full day, it ends up kind of being a repeat of the morning session, the afternoon session, or vice versa. So I don't know how beneficial educationally that is. I know that it becomes a convenience for people. And all those things would be on the table in terms of if you wanted to explore that. But I think we need to look at the educational piece first. I think we need to look at what gets done in that timeframe. And a lot of the essential things that are getting done for full day would still be getting done in that timeframe that I'm talking about. But you'd probably have to eliminate a lunch and just have a snack. Eliminate any type of, anything else that would be going down that might be, we might not consider a time on task. So it is important to know that, I think educationally, we're, we're going to keep going in that direction. And maybe there's a time in the future where we have to look at, you know, going back to a way in the past. But again, we also have many things that we have to go to that the state puts out. Preschool's not one of them. It's something that we think is important here in the Livers. And a lot of board members here would either have children in the district or were on the board and that was implemented the way that it is. And, you know, we don't want to take that apart. So I can assure you, we're going to try as best as we can to keep everything as is. But yeah, the biggest piece is the, any of the P and versus full day.
Right. I mean, Governor Murphy, I don't know if I necessarily agree with the entire last statement you made, because Governor Murphy has made some comments about pre-K.
Of course.
And how seriously it needs to be for the rest of the state.
And that's how you take it into account.
Has, has, so as you're speaking, has pre-K been running at a deficit which contributed to the overall deficit?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what that amount was last year?
I can tell you the amount for this year is approximately... About $150,000, $146,000 to $150,000.
$150,000.
This year, currency, right, that's in 19, this year.
You were saying north of $300,000 last year?
That was, I, that was a total figure, minus the tuition. So it's $150,000.
So we have an overall, if I must, that we look at, which is, which is a little less than half a million. We minus what, we write in the tuition and then you come to that, that $146,000 to $150,000 number. That's currently this year, right, like today.
Thank you, Rachel.
You got it.
Under finance agenda, there's also an agenda sheet that has number 18. We're going to be doing 1 to 17 for each. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that 1 through 18 be adopted, oh, sorry, 1 to 17, we're going to do 18 separately, 1 through 17. And number 18 be resolved as the Livers Board of Education approves the consulting contract with Tomco, Tomco and Associates and the Livers Board of Education for Educational Planning, $4,750 and a personal search, $3,850.
Mr. Abscado, your stain. Mr. Bezuti, four. Ms. Alcure. Mr. Brandinopoulos, four. Mr. Verandino, four. Mr. Vodoff, four. Mr. Mandola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King.
Education and curriculum. Be resolved that any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education and Curriculum Committee may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that 1, 2, 3 be accepted as read.
Mr. Abscado, four. Mr. Bezuti, four. Ms. Alcure, four. Mr. Brandinopoulos, four. Mr. Verandino, four. Mr. Vodoff, four. Mr. Mandola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King.
Policies. Policies can be used for... Policies and rules and regulations. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Policies and Rules and Regulations Committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the exception actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to accept one through seven plus the identity.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Mr. Brazuti, four. Ms. Alcuria, four. Mr. Randopoulos, four. Mr. Ferrandino, four. Mr. Vuno, four. Mr. Mendola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee, four.
Athletics and Student Activities. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the categories of Athletics and Student Activities Committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Second. I need to make a motion first. I make a motion. Roll call.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Mr. Brazuti, four. Ms. Alcuria, four. Mr. Randopoulos, four. Mr. Ferrandino, four. Mr. Vuno, four. Mr. Mendola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee, four.
Okay, New Business. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of New Business may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Okay. I make a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Mr. Brazuti, four. Ms. Alcuria, four. Mr. Randopoulos, four. Mr. Ferrandino, four. Mr. Vuno, four. Mr. Mendola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee, four. Personnel. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
I second.
Hearing none, I make a motion to accept one through nineteen.
One, two, three.
There's no, there's no exception. Nobody brought anything up, so one through nineteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Mr. Brazuti, four. Ms. Alcuria, four. Mr. Randopoulos, four. Mr. Ferrandino, four. Mr. Vuno, four. Mr. Mendola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee, four.
Okay, so now we're on non-agenda items, follow comment, and Tracy Corman, would you like to step up? There you go. Mr. Egan, going back to the last meeting. You stated that the state may not provide the full amount of the loan that we were seeking based off of new administrative policy coming down on the March fifth speech? And it was going to be after that, we would know more?
My contact at the Department of Education, they're very close to making the decision and inform them of the full decision.
Okay. Is it based off of, is anything that we were short on include us from getting the full amount? Like, was there anything in particular in the audit that's like, oh, I'm sorry, it was that reason? This is why we can't get the full amount, or it's just based off dollar numbers?
It's hard to, it's hard to, it's definitely the order that includes the full amount of the loan. And it comes out of the dock.
Also, last meeting, I know that you guys can't always anticipate the questions that are going to be asked. And sometimes you say, oh, good question, I don't have to answer to you that. Is there a way we can do a follow-up? Somebody's like, hey, you asked this question last week? Or do I have to keep getting up here and asking the same questions?
No, I would just ask the same question, but the follow-up could be responding to your email. I mean, if that's easier with your phone, I mean, if that's, the follow-up.
I asked it publicly, some people may want the actual public.
So you want us to, yeah, it depends on what it was about.
I think a follow-up news, I tried, yes, a blast on the website, just something, just like, you know, if there were loose ends. I can't remember any of my questions right now, but I know that I had questions and it was like, oh, we should ask that again. Like, especially about audit findings, who did what? Oh, we don't have you all in front of us, can't answer those questions right now, but, yeah.
This is on the non-agenda, but I'd just like to say, I am along with other board members and the superintendent of schools. I know the other staff attended, it was, we were invited to Dr. Seuss Day at Sturson School. And went there and I had the opportunity to read through a fifth grade class. It was Mrs. O'Keefe's class. And it was just, I've never seen students that were so well behaved. I didn't know what to do when, they weren't even acting up in the class. And I just had such a great day. And in my packet that came on Thursday to my house, I opened it up and I got a beautiful thank you card from Mrs. O'Keefe's fifth grade class. And this alone would have been worthwhile, but I didn't know it opened up. And the kids got so personal and the stuff that they wrote to me about going there that day, reading to them, it leaves the world to me. And I just want to thank for the invite, what a beautiful class. And I can't wait to do it again next year if I'm still on the board, but thank you so much.
Thank you, and we're going to call it a night. Thank you for coming out tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally screwed that up. You're still new at this, so bear with me. I have to make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Mr. Brazuti, four. Ms. Alcuria, four. Mr. Randopoulos, four. Mr. Ferrandino, four. Mr. Vuno, four. Mr. Mendola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee, four.
Thank you.